I'm here now.
Brenda just came in.
Just came in.
We are all here, present and accounted for. The meeting is called the order. Take a quick roll call to make sure everybody's here. Rebecca?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Katie?
Here.
Anna?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
Bob? Here. Okay, we'll stand and say the pledge of allegiance if you're so inclined to join us, please do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. One nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Sampson, do you have any extra things on the, on the agenda for this evening?
I don't have any additions unless you guys have any.
Okay. I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
I'll make the motion, Anna.
Anna, on the motion, that'll work. Second?
I'll second, Rebecca.
Rebecca, on the second. Any other discussion? A yes would be to confirm the agenda as shown. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero. Scheduled presenters, on February 8th at our last meeting, we went into closed session. The reason behind closed session is it gives us a chance to review things. In this case, it was the goals that we set forth, and I believe there were three of them. And I'm looking at the same time. It's our obligation as school board to meet at least twice during the year, once to review midterm, and once to do the end of year goals. So, at the time that we had our goals meeting, or our closed session meeting, at that time, Jeff mapped out where he is with his goals, what he's achieved, what he's looking to achieve. And so, at that time, we were called upon to ask any questions, show any concerns. Just in general, we had that time with Jeff on a personal or a closed session thing. There was no, there was not a lot of feedback there, so that's usually indicative of, could be of a variety of things, but in this case, I believe that Jeff is doing a decent job. And with the pandemic, it kind of throws us all off a little bit. We're not able to focus on the things that we absolutely wanted to. But at the same time, we're moving in a positive step forward with those goals. Jeff gave us outcomes in three of his goals and how he's worked toward them. The board was allowed to ask questions at that time. Tonight is the result of the closed session, and it's not a discussion item. Overall, when pulling all this information together, the board believes Jeff is doing a good job on our behalf. He's on task to complete the goals that we listed with some setbacks because of the pandemic, but in general, we feel good about where he's going and, and what he's accomplished so far. He's been very informative about our budget, but we always realize it's a work in progress. The pandemic has made all districts budgeting procedures difficult, but under the circumstances, I think we're doing as well as we can. One of the, one of the topics that was reaching out several times is the communication piece, which is goal number one. And we're not, we don't criticize what's been going on with it, but we think he can enhance our performance by putting some type of forum together that's in the beacon, or just in general, informing people outside of our school district families. That's our next step to make sure everybody is aware. And that was an overriding theme with several, several of your informational responses to me. So, the board felt you were doing a very good job, and as well as can be expected during the COVID crisis. Expanding communication by using our local paper with the superintendent column was echoed by many. You've been, you've been an effective, effective ambassador for our school. We ask our superintendent all the time to communicate to the public, be out there as our front person, be involved with mids, clubs, whatever it takes to network, and he's done well there. Create and update a strategy plan, including an action plan to implement. The creation of the X, I'm going to quote one of our members here. The creation of a strategic plan was an inclusive project and resulted in a workable final product. The implementation has however been a little lower priority due to the pandemic issues. The board understands this and looks forward to the implementation of the action plan. The third one is work with the school board, finance committee, and stakeholders to set desired fund balance percentages as a target and move the district forward towards that balance. The board has received monthly budget reports from our, our man, our business manager, as well as our superintendent. They've provided rationale for expenditures and revenue, and the CARES fund has been explained and purchases have been justified to us. The finance committee has been informed as well. We need to improve the fund balance. We are all in agreement on that. But, once again, with monies coming in from sources through CARE and monies that we spent, it's really hard to keep an absolute handle on things, but in general, the board gives positive marks on there. So, Jeff has a copy of the evaluation as shown that will go into his employment file, and we will follow this up at the end of the school year with his year-end performance. So, in general, things look good, Mr. Sampson. We would like you to continue to network outside of our school community, and I think that's probably been echoed in the past for you. So, that's where we are. And although this isn't a discussion item, do you have any concerns about that, Jeff?
No.
Okay. We're going to move on, as once again, that isn't a direct discussion item. So, moving down to public input. If anybody was here this evening and wishes to speak to the school board about things germane to our district, personal criticisms aren't acceptable here. If you have a complaint or concern, now is your time to do it. You have up to three minutes to address the board directly. Is anyone out there wish to speak to the board? Okay, moving to consideration to approve the finance report. Josh, are you here?
I am.
The floor is yours.
All right. Yeah, so I've got to pull up on the screen there. Now, the, basically, the cash flow worksheet is where we're at this point in time when the agenda was set. At top, you'll see the cash balances in both community resource and merchants checking account, about $900,000. There's not a whole lot of excitement that happens in terms of finance as we get through the spring, as a lot of things are said. You'll see the normal things going in and out. Payroll, payroll taxes, payroll liabilities, as well as the incoming ideas funds. And they've seemed pretty consistent to what we have seen as we projected out earlier in the year. So, as we got through our finance or the cash flow here, it goes through the middle of May, where our cash fund or cash flow balance stays positive. Our debt service payments have gone out, as we talked at the last board meeting, at the end of January, beginning of February, and we've, we're set on that. The next debt service that you'll see will come in August as an interest-only payment on, basically, the mortgage on the building. As we talked quite a bit financially, there's not a whole lot to report right now. As we go forward, we will be doing one more revision of this budget for fiscal year '21 prior to the final revision at the end of the fiscal year. As the legislature right now is deciding on a funding bill that would potentially introduce some more stimulus funds to the district in terms of ESSR dollars. A lot of it has already been spoken for, as we've had quite a bit of expense, whether it be, you know, building things such as the ionization, or the 10-passenger van, or staffing issues, whether it be to fill in holes for essential care workers, or six assignments for staff, or workshop, extra learning time to get ready for distance and hybrid learning. So, now we do have quite a bit of expense, and I know as we talked earlier, a large focus on the, the financial end of things is building the fund balance up towards more of where our board policy is at. And it's been a difficult thing to do this last fiscal year with all the other additional expenses for COVID-related items. So, it'd be real important on this next revision, once the legislature decides just what stimulus funds will be coming out to districts, and we get our dollar amount to have that revision to kind of really hone in on what the potential fund balance could be for us at the end of fiscal year '21. It's kind of the short, quick version of it, but if there are any questions, I can do my best to answer what you have.
Having, having said what you said about the legislator, legislature reimbursing us for stimulus money, do we have hopes that the amount of stimulus money will compensate us for what we've had to spend during the COVID?
Yeah, initially, what they had looked at was an estimate of four times the GERS funds, which would put us around $300,000. That amount will get us pretty close to neutral with what we've had. We've had a significant amount between CARES funds, ESSR funds, GERS funds, the first rounds of each of those, as well as some very nice donations from, you know, the community, county, and whatnot. You know, those two items are going to put us right around $800,000, which, you know, to go essentially neutral on that, that's a lot of extra expense that's come to the district because of COVID-related items. But we are fortunate where, if the second wave comes in at the amount estimated, that we will come out more or less neutral. The, the big hit is going to be trying to fill in gaps of both the food service, where we had a $90,000 general fund transfer into food service at the end of last fiscal year, because we're just not seeing the number of meals going out. We're not having the revenue coming in. But we still have all the expense. And then the other large area, it would be the essential care workers and covering the cost of the daycare, but not having the revenue come in for those items. So, a lot of any revenue that we will receive will end up really offsetting lost revenue is the big part, lost revenue, and then the added expense of staffing and payroll for a six assignment and for social distancing. So, the positive is that if the second wave of ESSR comes through, we should be pretty much neutral. The negative, I suppose, is that here we have $800,000 coming into the district, but we're still going to be where we're at before that all started.
Okay, other questions for Josh? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as shown.
I'll move to approve, Bob.
Bill, on the approval motion. Second?
I'll second, Katie.
Katie, on the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the finance report as given. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob? Yes. That passes by a six-zero vote. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for separate action. Jeff, I'm going to hand this over to you. You always like to have some recognition on resolutions for gifts.
Yes, we also, we always want to recognize our donors that are giving us dollars on a monthly basis here. We want to thank the veterans of foreign wars for their $1,000 donation to each the girls' and boys' basketball program, and also the Cannon Falls Education Foundation for their $260 donation toward document cameras for fifth grade. The other thing I want to call to the attention also tonight as part of the consent agenda is that we have another retirement coming up here, and that is of Terry Sewell, who has been here in the district for 23 years, and we want to thank her for her service to both the students and families and staff of Cannon Falls area schools. So, we want to give her congratulations on retirement, and she will be missed.
Terry has been an integral part of our district for so long, and she does such a good job. A hole there, for sure. Please take just one minute to look at the, the minutes from the past two meetings to make sure they're all up to date and correct. And take a look at the bills as well, and when you're ready, I would look for a motion to approve. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Brenda, on the motion?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Anna, on the second. Any discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of the consent agenda as shown. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
And Bob? Yes. That passes six-zero. Action items. Nothing under old business, not showing any new business. And we'll hop down to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Bob. I just got a few items here. One, this week is school board recognition week, and so I want to thank all of you for all of your hard work and dedication to the students and staff of Cannon Falls area schools. Lori will have something for you when we are all back together again, so that we can get that in person, if you will. So, take a minute to congratulate yourselves on all of your hard work. This week is also Bus Driver, or School Bus Driver Appreciation Day, which is set for February 24th of this week. And I know Allison at the bus garage has made that into a week, which is great. And so, we want to thank all of our bus drivers for the districts and van drivers as well. They're included in that process as well. So, thank you for all of your hard work and dedication to the students of our district and prioritizing safety over everything. So.
Jeff, one thing. Are you, you finished? I'm sorry.
I, I had one more item, but if you had a question there.
Nope, just wait till after you're finished.
Okay, perfect. The other item I wanted to update the board on is that the COVID committee has been meeting weekly, obviously, and Rebecca can chime in, or Bill can chime in as we go through this. But the committee has been investigating on bringing back our sixth through 12 students Monday through Thursday, but still staying in a distance format on Fridays. And we're waiting on some distance learner survey results to come back in this week and resolving other issues that have been brought forward from other different, different surveys and concerns. And so, we're working on addressing those concerns, and hopefully, the, the committee will have a better direction this coming Friday. And if they are looking forward to moving toward bringing them back, then we would have some information to share out with the community after that. So.
Just look for a.
Bill, want to add on to that or not?
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay. One thing I think we, we spoke of is the Friday still maintaining that day as it is. I think there's been a little confusion about commentary around full-time. So, we will be still continuing to use that Friday as a cleaning and prep day.
Yeah, Friday's served a pretty big purpose in a lot of different areas between cleaning and prep for teachers that you had mentioned, but also the contact of distance learners and providing support for them and providing enrichment to other students that may need it as well. So, they, they serve as multi-functioning days, I guess, on that day, and it is very productive in a lot of different ways. Go ahead, Rebecca. Sorry.
No, that was the clarification that I wanted, as well as sort of the, the purpose of Fridays and how that day is being used. So, thank you. I think that, that's helpful.
Yeah.
Jeff, somebody had thrown out during previous conversation about, about the board members having some type of informational sheet that allows us to answer constituents' questions maybe better than we could do individually for the upcoming referendum discussion. So, is that something that you're working toward, or could you work toward?
Yeah, and obviously, we're, we're talking about the approval of architects and construction company management companies coming up on the agenda, but I have a meeting set tomorrow at 1:00 with Carl Anderson to start developing.
Any, any other questions or comments for Jeff?
I have a question. You talked about there's other concerns that need to be worked through prior to getting the sixth through 12th graders back in on a non-hybrid schedule. Are there specific issues that we're looking at?
Yeah, a lot of the big picture issues from surveys that have been put out is making sure that we're meeting distancing guidelines, which we feel pretty comfortable with where that is at currently. And maybe Tim and Jennifer can jump in here too, but there's been conversations around vaccines, and we are pretty far into our vaccination priority list at this point. Trying to think of the other concerns, big-picture-wise.
The other biggest one was actually lunches. In our seventh and eighth grade lunch in particular, with one cohort at a time, it takes, you know, sometimes up to half, half of lunch for kids to get through the line. And by doubling that number, we're going to need to make sure we double, have at least another serving line. So, right now, we have one serving line. We're probably going to need to have two going to make lunches work effectively and get kids through there.
Yeah, to answer your question, you know?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Sampson? Moving forward, consideration to approve the final reading of the resolution relating to the determine, determining the necessity of approving a capital project levy authorization and issuing general obligation bonds and calling an election thereon in ballot language for the May 11th, 2021 election.
This is the second reading of this ballot language, and will need to be finalized tonight to meet the legal requirements for notification to the counties that we are having a special election. I do recommend approval of the ballot language as written, as it was written by a bond attorney that we use for projects like this. So, are there other questions or comments in regards to the resolution itself and the ballot language?
Okay. Nothing there? We will need a, a motion to approve this resolution on this final reading. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion. It's Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca. Second?
I guess I was thinking that we would read it, then, then do the.
That's what I was also wondering. That was my hesitation too, Bill.
Okay, I, in the past, when you've had resolutions, we made a, a motion.
Motion first and then.
A second.
Okay.
And then.
Fine, I'll second it.
We have a motion to second it on the floor for the resolution. Any other discussion? If not, clerk?
All right, I guess I was, I printed it off, but I'm wondering how much of it you read.
I think you read right here, if you can see my cursor.
Yep, just that?
Yep.
Okay.
The bold capitalization there?
Yep.
Okay.
Relating to determining the necessity of approving a capital project levy authorization and issuing general obligation bonds and calling a special election thereon. And then do I continue to read?
I think that goes into your duties as a clerk.
Yeah. Then later on, it says, like on the next page, it says, "Be it resolved by the school board." Do I read that part?
Yep.
Okay. "Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 252 Cannon Falls Area Schools, Minnesota, as follows. It is hereby found, determined, and declared as follows. The board has investigated the facts and does hereby find, determine, and declare that it is necessary and expedient to..." And then I read all, keep going?
Well.
I know, it's a lot.
You can, you can read them if you want to, but they're all here on, on the board.
Yeah.
In here, I guess. If you guys wanted to read.
What does the board want, want me to do? Do you want me to read through all of it?
I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, because I mean, I already read through them all, but I just was wondering what we needed to read.
I think we're good here.
Okay. And then now it's time for discussion, if you guys have any, right?
We, we called for discussion prior, I think. And so, I think you're ready for the roll call vote, and the yes vote would be to approve the final reading, correct?
Right. Okay. So, Bob?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie? Yes. Bill?
Yes.
And Rebecca?
Yes.
Sorry for the confusion. This one confused me.
Baby, that's a lot of reading.
That is a lot of reading. But this is posted on our website, so.
Okay, we had some good discussion on pre-referendum information last time, which then led into the, the facility meeting that was held a short time later that was attended by both Anna and by Rebecca, along with folks on the facility committee. I will, I will let Jeff jump into this, and I'm looking for Dave's two cents worth as well, if he's here, and then the board members and how they feel about it.
Yes, you've described exactly what had happened. We held architectural company interviews and construction management company interviews last week, and then are bringing a recommendation for each of those areas for tonight's meeting to approve moving forward and having them create a contract with us, at which point I'll have our lawyers review and then bring back those contracts for your final approval again. But in the meantime, they will start work on our project.
And they would be initially, whom is our architect company?
The committee is recommending ISG for the architect company, and Carl Anderson is the construction management company.
Dave Peterson, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Working with ISG in the past, I believe last meeting, you, you did give them a stamp of approval as people you have worked with and feel comfortable with.
Yeah, I, I think after good conversation in our last facilities meeting, the combination of ISG and Carl Anderson, I think we're getting quality people that will be involved with this project. I'm pretty happy with both those decisions, and I think the rest of the committee was all in agreement with that.
Anna, any input here? You're, you're the liaison.
There, the presentations from all four organizations were, we, ultimately, as a committee, we determined we couldn't make a bad decision. They were all definitely up to the project, very capable, and the presentations were all fairly similar in, in their scope, and. And ultimately, it was a unanimous choice that Kraus Anderson and ISG would be the best options for us going forward. Partly because we've worked with and spoken with both of them prior to that interview process. And it would mean a more seamless route forward with the project. Not having to bring another group up to speed with what we've done so far.
So you you feel good about recommending ISG as our architect company?
I do.
Okay, Rebecca, your first jump into a very important facility meeting. You you have anything for us?
I mean, I think Anna and Dave did a really great summary. I mean, the presentations were were very thorough. And like I said, you know, it's it's not a bad spot to be in when, you know, no matter what decision you make, you're still like, it's still going to be a good choice. But I think given our previous, you know, kind of working relationship with ISG, it makes sense to continue to pursue that. So.
You recommend ISG as well, then?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions for any of the speakers here? If not, I would look for a motion to approve ISG, us entering into a contract with them as our architect company.
Wait a second.
Anna on the motion, Brenda on the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve ISG as our architect company. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for the vote. Consideration to prove to enter into a contract with the construction management company. Jeff, a little more of the same?
Yeah, Chris Anderson and we interviewed two different companies and they were both very, very well spoken. Give good presentations.
Anna, you would recommend you would recommend across Anderson, you felt like that was a good joy. They did well. Rebecca, you you were the same.
Yep.
Okay. So I would look for a motion to approve Kraus Anderson as our construction management company.
I'll make the motion.
Rebecca on the motion?
I'll second Katie.
Katie on the second. Other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve Kraus Anderson. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve the list of twenty one. Of twenty twenty one election judges, excuse me.
Yes, with us heading into a special election, we will need to hire election judges for May eleventh twenty twenty one, which will be our election date. And these will be the qualified people that will be election judges for us, and I recommend hiring them.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of twenty twenty one election judges.
Katie on the motion?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Anna on the second. Other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the list as shown. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bob or Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes. The election judge is passed by a six zero vote. Consideration to approve medical leave request from March one to March twelve twenty one.
This is for Missy Claprick, and I recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Anyone? Brenda? You won that. And Bill, did you second?
Yes.
Motion by Brenda second by Bill to approve the medical request leave for Missy for the date shown. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
And Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a six zero vote. Consideration to prove Nick McGrath is a long term sub for the same dates.
Yes, as shown, and I would recommend approval for that position higher.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve Nick McGrath for that long term sub or short term sub, actually?
I'll make a motion to approve Nick McGrath as the long term sub for March first to March twelfth.
Katie on the motion?
I'll second Rebecca.
Rebecca on the second. Other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of Nick McGrath in that capacity. Bob, yes. Brenda?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a six zero vote. Jeff, I've seen Nick's name come up a few times. He's been very good as a as a sub for us. But he's only working in like two week increments. I hope we can.
Yes, yes, he's done a good job throughout the year for us.
Consideration to approve the Minnesota State High School League proposed constitutional amendment.
The Minnesota State High School League is proposing changing their or their constitution. To allow for two superintendent position on their board of directors for the state high school league. These two positions would not replace two, but they would be in addition to what the current board size is now currently. And so they're asking school boards to. Approve this measure if they would, and then we have to vote yes or no electronically. After the board takes action. So with these changes, there would be two positions opened up for superintendents. Which there hasn't been over the years. Basically, they they have representatives from different areas of schools and superintendents for one area that they used as a. At large position in the past, but now they want to make it permanent.
Reed, do you have any input here? Does this just a procedural thing to expand the number of directors?
Yeah, I would agree with that. Nothing really more than what what Jeff had said, but just to get maybe more some of an administrative. Outlook and perception on on their regular board meetings.
There's no reason why we shouldn't approve this. This is pretty procedural. They're just expanding for more.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. We look for a motion to approve the High School League proposed constitutional amendment.
I'll move to approve.
By Bill, second.
I'll second Brenda.
Brenda on the second. Other discussion? Okay, a yes vote would be to approve the High School League proposed constitutional amendment. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yeah.
Bob, yes. That passes by a six zero vote. We are ahead of schedule here. Is there? Anything that we need to discuss before we close for the evening? At this point in time, I think we've got all of our business taken care of for this round. And so I would look for a motion to adjourn. Who is that?
This is Wally.
And what is Wally? I'm not a.
Wally is a.
Is a.
Ten week old valley bulldog. So he's half boxer, half English bulldog.
He will have some size to him when the dust settles.
Yeah, we're a little worried about the size of the.
Okay, motion to adjourn, please.
Well, I kind of want to watch the puppy now, though. But all things considered, I guess I'll make the motion to adjourn.
To adjourn. And who who did the second?
That was me, Anna.
Anna on the second, or we can put Wally down too. Any, any other discussion? A yes vote would be to adjourn. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Bob, yes, that passes by a six zero vote. We are adjourned. Thank you for your time this evening.